January admitting order, ask Councilman Woods to give our education.
Oh, grace of heaven, Father, we thank you, Lord, first of all, for this day. Father, we thank you, Lord, for life and strength. Father, we pray that this will have some new years on earth, that we can keep our vision, and keep our hand in your hand, and we walk through the general light. That will be leaders and enhance this movement, Lord. Father, in all of this, thank you so much, thank you, amen.
Amen. We've got a three for agenda tonight, leave. Minutes to change in the agenda. You're going to be a motion that we accept, then that's present. Something interesting next motion.
I said, all favor, raise your right hand.
This is the time of year where we have our election of officers, and we like to have chairman vice chair. And I've been chairman for two years, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Happy to pass out a bomb sometime else, we try to mix it up. And we have a two-year term length, which is a good thing as well. So, I want to thank you all for the honor of being chairman. I think that people that come to the meetings regularly, I hope to see that we have a real commitment to making sure we get along and respect each other's views. Even when we have different views, we are able to argue those out and kind of come up and speak with a common voice. And I'm sure that'll continue in the future. Makes it a lot easier to be chairman of the council. If no one has an issue, I'll just do both of them, and then we'll turn it over. Mr. Stein, is that okay? All right, we have a motion or nomination for the office of chairman.
I'm nominating Jason Steen.
Is there a second? Are there any other nominations? They have a second to that. Thank you, Dr. Allen. We can go to nominations, close nominations, and ask for a vote to accept Mr. Steen. All favor, raise your right hand. Next is vice chairman. Is there a nomination for the office of vice chairman?
I'd like a nomination, we'd be glad.
Any other? Second, Dr. Woods, any other? All in favor of Mr. Glad, the vice chairman, please raise your right hand. All right, I'm turning it all over to you, Mr. Steen, and I'm going to move. You can get the hot seat. Good luck.
All right, thank you all, members of council, we'll continue to look forward, and hopefully, you know, we're still all contained, we're still all within here. We'll continue to hopefully keep our meetings short, and keep going with business. The next thing we got on our agenda is the approval of minutes, it'll be some of the first we got to do, thank you. Anybody have any corrections, we'll thank you for those minutes.
Mike, what should we approve the minutes as, Mr. Stein?
We have a motion, a second. Motion by Mr. Moore, thank you. Can I do? All in favor, please raise your right hand.
It's Stain, it's absent.
Dr. Patel's absent, it's a huge thing. Any old business, we don't have any old business, and we'll move on to new business. And our new business is ordinance 743, that's ordinance developed a joint county industrial business park in conjunction with Dillon County, South Carolina. I would say from you. Do I have that on my list?
Chairman, members of council, when we put the agenda together, all we had was a title, so we're asking you to consider per creating the title only, even though what you'll find on your desk is a copy, or you will have a copy of the ordinance itself. It's to develop a small industrial park on the retail side of Harbor Freight property. This is across, I would call Caddy Corner, across, across on the old retail store, across the intersection, across the 95 intersection, on the northern side of Dillon, of 95. So, it's being developed with Dillon County, obviously, they're able to use Marlboro County, some of the Marlboro County incentives, and so we would get 1% of the taxes paid, of any taxes that are paid on property. So, we're jointly working with Dillon County on this particular property.
Is the same thing we do tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Hanes, is this new property?
It's new, new to us, yes, and new Dillon, I think that they probably have the property, but as you may know, it's...
Because we already have it with us, Bill.
We have it with us, the park on Buckland, the southeast corner of that 95 intersection. This is taking place on the northwest corner, Caddy Corner, across 95, but it's where Harbor Freight Retail has moved, over there, along with the Marlboro Electric, what was Marlboro Electric, Shell Building, which is now, has folks in. So, they have developed a park over there, and now we have a partial stake in, just a piece of that park.
One more question, Mr. Wood. This is more of a tax arrangement, this isn't like the Tricam, we're going to have to give a clarity.
Exactly, I'm sorry, yeah, I didn't make that clear. This is just a tax arrangement, so that Dillon can take advantage, or the industry can take advantage of Marlboro County type of incentives.
And there's no cost to us, whatever they do, to down off, or whatever.
We don't even have to worry about cost, or any preparation.
Any more questions? Now, we have a motion on, on a simple...
Mike, we can approve through the higher authority.
Second.
There's a motion, a motion on second, Dr. Patel, approve this by time one of the first week. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, next is we've got a GIS demonstration, and Mr. Hanes, you.
I'm going to start with a little bit of presentation, while Lisa could. We would like to make the presentation set up, and make sure that folks can help, comes up. I remember the first time I ever heard, I was at a meeting, I ever heard anything about geographical information system, somebody told me the GIS system, and I thought, they explained it with a map, map of the county, map of the town, map of the county, and I think, oh, I've got one of those in the car, what can you tell me with a map that I can't figure out for myself? But it's actually, it actually has turned into a pretty powerful tool for government and for citizens. The base information is available, we begin to get some idea of what we can do with this. The process of adding information as we go from here, and originally from here tonight, is we're about ready to roll out this project and show it to everybody, make it available to everybody, but it may never end. There's always something that we may want to add, some information, in terms of information that's on the map, it may not end as things change or develop. Government and citizens need to figure out where they are in space and time, and this is one way that gives us one tool for this. As we've talked about many services, when we come to the budget process, we've talked about things that are operated without camp, or even privately, and we can think of some of the ways that GIS might help, and Lisa's going to show you some of the beginnings of this, but questions like, where do the people really live? Where do the services need to be? That's information that you can pull from these kinds of maps, as the information gets loaded in. You can ask who lives within 15 minutes, if you decide about 15 minutes represents, who lives within 15 minutes of a particular intersection? It's easy enough, you can actually come up with a real number, it's not just where I live, or where we think everybody lives. Which company serves a particular area, or even a piece of property, whether it's electric, cable, whatever it may be? If that's loaded in, we can find the answer to that. We can ask, where are the fire department boundaries? What areas might not be covered? Pretty simply, that's all, that's already available on the version of this. Where are the water lines? Where are the fire hydrants? Emergency water points? Mines that fire departments are authorized to full problem? And we need to know where those are for some reason. If we put the information in, it's going to be in the system. We can determine where in the county wells might be, a good well might be difficult to come by, just because of the soil types. We've, one of our layers that she'll show you in a minute is soil types, and so there's some information that that can tell you or hint, that might be the case there. And then again, things that's simple for us, is where the county roads, how many miles are, where the bad spots, where does our county road actually run across a perp and dam? That might be an emergency situation, might create an emergency situation at some point. All those kinds of things can be here. And the kinds of things that we talked about when we first talked about this project are economic development, but what I've already talked about is that really, or is not directly economic development, is economic development, that things like where is there 100 acres of property in Marlboro County? It becomes more economic development. And all that we've said, or I've said, without saying anything about ownership, taxation of property that's available, all the information is available in our offices. And the local governments in the two states I'm familiar with, the most familiar with, are almost like, they're set up to be inefficient. We have a left department heads, we have a right department heads, we have departments that are zero in on a particular issue, and don't have to, by law, maybe, share information. And as we begin to get into this project, begin to realize that this created a need for sharing of information. We're asking, we've asked the clerk reports, the tax assessor's office, billing inspections, the county treasurer's office, county auditor's office, delinquent tax collections, and the 911 offices to use the same system, and at the same time, give us a little bit of the information that will be shared. So, we're combining some information from all these different departments, and then we're able to share, not only within the organization, but out into the public as well. Each work night, the information is updated from that day's work. That was a job in itself, to get that arranged. So, as you look up a piece of property eventually, if you look today, or look tomorrow, you'll be able to see the tax payments are current through today, one day ahead, or one day behind. We will, we'll be able to look tomorrow, and we'll know what's current. We'll be able to look at a list of all those forfeited land commission property holdings. Again, in that place, that's a delicious list of things that if you're interested, we could look at. Just right now, a listing of things, and we can go to each one, pull it up, and take a look at those. But our information is, will be synchronized every work night. What she's going to show you today is based on our website access, this would be the site that folks would go to out of the community, that we've been going to here in the office. Lisa, in her office, has a more detailed access, she has access to more details, and some of that will officially roll out to the public, but right now, we're still catching errors, and we're finding holes in information, and we're finding some few problems that still exist, either the information wasn't there to begin with, or it didn't transfer like it should. But so, what we're rolling out slowly to the public, and what we're using will be pretty accurate information as far as we can determine. We do keep reminding ourselves that there will be all kinds of questions, and there will be concerns. Property lines won't be like we think they should be, or like the owners think they will be. Whether right or wrong, we can't believe that this is out of record as of right now, and this is what we're going to be serving out. Lisa's our mapping clerk in the tax office, has been with the county, and I didn't ask you ahead of time for X number of years, 10 years?
Nine years.
Nine years, okay. Volunteered to take on the GIS project. In school, taking courses on the geographical information systems in school, agreed to do the extra work, and I think the video tells she gets kind of excited by some of the things that she's able to do with this, and as Harry has said earlier, it beats a pencil and a piece of paper, so that's, it's part of that self-preservation on her part. I'm going to quit talking, I'm going to talk for a minute, and we'll respond to questions, whoever needs to respond, we'll try to answer.
This is what the website would look like, if you go on it, and on the side here, it says the Quick Start Guide, and that's what I have printed for all of you, and what you can do, you can do lots of things too, that you can, like, usually. Zoom box up here at the top, and you can zoom in to any question. And you can zoom in again to get all the way to the parcels. And then it shows you that, so, close the image, and then you can pick all the parcels. And it's showing here on the side, who the owner is, and then there's a place that says show property owner. And when you do that, it will come up in a little window, and it actually shows you a copy of the map, and as you scroll down, it will show you the information they own their, like, papers, or papers, and things like that. And over here, then you can zoom back out, and then you can always hit the home button, and that'll take you there. You can also get previous stuff and take back. You can email, use that, you can copy paste it, or if you know, it's already tooling email on that. You can print it from there, and then, this is a different layer, and that shows you the geography, and you can go around and off.
One of the things we saw earlier this afternoon, you can look at the 2004, was it, whenever the last picture, the last lights came out, you can look at pictures of then compared to now, because the changes, buildings have been added, changes have been made of this property, or maybe you differently than a lot of that.
And on the parcel tool, on this part, you can actually type in the name. And it will show you everything in Marlboro, I just typed Marlboro, but it will show you everything there. And then you can get zoomed, and it will take you to that actual parcel. And then, and you keep zooming in, you want to do that. And then under the tool here, you can use it as a measure, you can measure all around it. To get your measures, and then... Here you can measure the areas, just pick all the areas, ring all the corners. And that will give you the acreage. And the heat cleared, you got that. And the geographic tool, you can type in all of the address. This is what you would tell them, will show you parcel range.
Yeah, I told you to fill in for the dead spots and things that were managed to load, and I've already read all of them.
I think that's better than, with Adam on there, it looks better.
Actually, the system is more sophisticated, yeah, it's grown, I guess, overall, throughout the past 10 years, and this is easier, more detailed, right?
Is it sort of show our district lines, by the mountains, we'll do a district line?
We do not have that, we don't have political boundaries, or other city account, but we can, those are the kind of things we can add.
There's definitely some of the maps on there, the things.
Well, and Lisa brought one of the old blue maps, just to show you, what we've been doing, of course, is everybody walks in and handles the map, and they tear pieces, one of the first conversations I had with Councilman Steen about what kind of shape the map were going to be. This is a, this digital, from your house, from your home, from your office, this replaces those analog weights. We still will have a paper copy, and there will still be my law paper flats of the divisions, you may have to stop whatever things you're doing. We're, we have this information stored on a server that's located in the, in our building, as well as with the GIS company, and then when we got over here this afternoon, we realized that this building is not connected to the server, with a line, it's all through the internet, so some of the functions are a little slower, or maybe slower than you would find at home, plus we're using a probably six or eight-year-old laptop that we have extras, so it's not the quickest thing to do. But you can see, even from your own, a basic computer will get the information and can create a map, for your property, for somebody else's property, whatever you want to do.
You can also use this box up here, the search box, and you can type in the map numbers.
Is there a link to this from our county, or is it?
There really is, it's not linked yet. We wanted to wait until Lisa made this presentation, before we were too much, and prepare ourselves for the questions that we think we'll get. But what we wanted to do was to make it easy enough, and get a system that's easy enough to operate from home, that folks felt comfortable playing with and looking at. What we ran into, I'll tell you, in Richmond County, was we ended up being the IT person, the IT expert in our planning office, for everybody who called and said, you know, how do I get this map correct? And so, that was one of the concerns, we want it to be pretty straightforward, and the details to be there, and the instructions to be clear enough that you can, you can definitely follow them, but we want to be able to help people do that, and see something that the water, the water is getting to work.
And this is, I just typed the Marlboro, that was Marlboro, I'm still showing them there, because, you know, here it shows, there's a report, several names. Like, so you can type in names up here outside. Type the name, you can type different places there. And over here, you can find coordinates, if you know the one street next to it, you'll find it. And prepare pictures, that's for each of them, but there.
It's what you have short layers of, that dictionary, that's not for your show, for your show, it's county.
And then you just, it shows by, we didn't see it. You can talk, that's all, 2008, should, to name, things aren't being...
I think the people could use this all the time to look, it's going to be a benefit to them, I mean, not to cut the traffic out, you know, a lot of times, they just need something to look up, or find out first, to stop what they were doing for some days, and this would probably eliminate a lot of the questions and...
And once you catch any kind of error, it fixes it, it's fixed. Right, it's in the system, and everybody's seeing the same thing, wants the information. We do have Marlboro water in the system, with whatever information that they have in their file, they have their information in digital format, and in the tax office version of this, that's, that's an overlay, you can choose, see the water lines, you can, we have the fire disaster boundaries, and a few other things that you're not seeing right now, so again, this is the version that will serve out to the public first. And as we go along, one of the things we talked about the other night, in the recreation plan, we have the flood zone areas have been now made an overlay. And there's a few errors that they found in those, where they're having to tweak, make it look right, or make it work right, but it's in the, the information's there, and so within a few days, that will be up and running, as another layer, so you can turn on, if you want to see the flood area, you can turn it off if you're not interested, turn over lines, other things you can pick up in the turn office, it's fixed, or...
Who else got a vote, is it Jay, if we send this stuff to Jay, is that...
Yeah, they're actually handling it, right, and they're coming itself, they're PH, handling a lot of the add-ins, and they're going to try to clean us off as quick as they can, because I'm still operating out of the original contract. And again, eventually, it will be where we can add what we want to say, whether it's, you know, council lines, or just whatever it may be, that you want to look, be able to look at a map and pick up from it.
And then here, we have, to get the elevation, like, here to here, it will show you the difference in the elevation from here to here. And then you can also do an elevation profile. This just patches more of that.
I'm going to take a look, I guess you say, 90 minutes?
Yeah. Probably, well, before then, I want to get a light, it's level on the map, and there's a few things of this. One of the things we found, and you'll find it the first time you get on it and start looking, is the information that we have is that that's on the deed. So, if I bought a piece of property in my name, and for whatever the reason, I put it in my initials, J E Hanes, later I bought a piece of property, and I put it in mine and my wife's name, and maybe I have one of my own in J T Hanes, those are going to show us different owners, but we can't tell the difference in the tax office.
Right, you have to know what's on the deed.
Yeah, we have to, we have to know what's on the deed. Some, Lisa's been able to fix, I asked a question a couple weeks ago about the forfeited land commission, wait a minute, I'd love to see all that property, and where is that located anyway? Are there any big pieces? Well, we had even done the same thing there, sometimes it was forfeited land commission, sometimes it was Marlboro forfeited land commission, sometimes it was FLC, or whatever else it's called. And so, we have all kinds of names, and she went through and just manually changed those to where we defined them, and now we call that up to get a list of properties, and you can go to each one, and you could, I think, eventually get it all showed on some map, because we're still learning the system.
Another interesting tool that we have here, we've got a little straight here, and this might take you, but if I would actually type it to the street, you don't let you see it.
We'd like to switch programs and carry with, and pick it up, and Google Maps is good work, so you actually see a firm picture from the street. You pick some intersections, and then that plays. It's slower than it was this afternoon, but you get the idea, and...
I love it.
That's more, that's more, I haven't seen on a building.
I enjoy watching. The index, identify numbers.
Okay.
The index, you can click on it, and click on the address, and it will show you all the addresses here, as well as if they're known, and then you can click on any of those, and it will take you to that address. And then it also does the parcels, it will do that, if you know the particular parcel and the number, you can find it here, you can just click on the address, and it will take you to it.
So what happens now, when someone wants a building permit to build, or say locate a home, they need to have an address, and they get that from the 911. They'll be using the same system, getting the address will be assigned to a piece of property, and then it's immediately available across the street, in the tax office, in building codes, and all those relations, so that we know the address. So, everything gets addressed properly, rather than it being jimmy's property on 38, and because I haven't got my address assigned to me yet. But anything we do then, after that... But anything we do then after a singular legislation at night, everybody's looking at the same information, either looking at it from home or from another office.
And it does that worldwide, also if you like, you will go to boards, you can just click on that.
I mean, it's a lot of information over here, you know, the good thing is, we're catching up and telling us around the counties and states, you know, meaning that anything you make easier for our citizens to, they do from around the house to travel, is a, you know, a good thing. So, you know, what I like about it, everybody's got, yeah, I mean, each individual agency within the county government, you know, is buying in on this. So look, we, some other things, pick places, you gotta hit everybody on track, you know, it's kind of, some people have been territory lots of things, but we're all, it's all for citizens in all counties, you know, and that's what we're trying to do here. So we thank y'all for, you know, I mean, you guys have any more questions or? You can go on and have the computer on and play with it.
You know, you can, I would, my thoughts, I would gladly help you.
Okay.
I'm very comfortable there.
All right. Forward, thank y'all for putting it together, it's an asset in Marlboro County now, that part, so. Next thing I'll do is go over our approval council, regular meeting scheduled for 2016. Any questions or anything good, I mean, that's a long, a long time out, so. You have any change?
The, please note that one of the dates does fall on the primary election day. I think when Tricia and I were thinking some of this through, we caught one of the conflicts of, of primary, another primary day, but this is the actual primary election day for, it could be for council and other activities. So we don't know for sure, but just want to point that out, not to give us conflict, that it does fall on that noon, 12:10 day.
We can change it.
We can change it to be a closer C or a different town, so.
Yes, give us something, anything else I could, give us a guide, give us a, sorry. Your net, I'm going to make a motion to approve. All right, Mr. Allen, he's likely to second, all my favors around him. All right, what I mean important is the boards and commissions. It's the first of years, I guess it's a good time to look over everything and find out, and we're, in 2016, we hope we're going to need a lot of these boards and commissions to do a lot of work. Right, so we'll all look at it, and then get a copy of it and revisit it. Reports, Ms. H. Devore, find us.
Mr. Chair, your little counsel, for the month of December, expenditures were at forty-eight percent of the budget now. This is about two percent under budget for this point of the year. Revenue's going under budget by about sixteen percent for the fiscal year. But as I said, for the last couple of months, this is normal for this point of the year, and tax revenue is increasing monthly. January should be the best month for collections, and we should see a significant increase that will bring revenues more in line with expenditures. Our annual financial audit is still underway, and we anticipate receiving the report to review any time. I actually emailed the auditor today, but I didn't get a reply back before the meeting started about a specific time to get the report. I'm still monitoring legislation on local government funding, but I haven't seen any significant changes in the last several months per the Association of County's website. Any questions?
Questions? Anything else? Next up, what's your name, your most recent report?
Every three, every month, I always can have those employees with five more years of service tomorrow. First up, Ken Allen. Seven, we show seventeen years of service, David Martin, fourteen years, Terry Lay, thirty-one years, William Parker, eight years, and Walter Pratt, sixteen years. We do have maps and reports delivered to our office in Spencer Falls in South Carolina, part of transportation on bridge inspections for two crooked brick bridges or decrooked brick bridges. Bridges pass the inspection, but there were areas that were only in fair condition. Our animal control officer, Josh Kuhn, and the shelter director as well, I guess, has provided a report for the month of November, December. Remember, our meeting changed in December, I guess it was, and didn't yet have, or it was early December, we didn't yet have the November report. But there are four euthanasia procedures, three adoptions, and a hundred and fifty-one animals transferred out in a two-month period. Like I said last time, I guess it's still a maintenance needed, but folks in large cities and some in other areas don't have stray dogs and whatnot, and we're providing dogs for people in those areas, and that's a good thing. We had a hundred and twenty-nine stray dogs, thirty-six feral cats picked up during the month of November, December. Twenty-two from Wallace, fourteen from McCall, five from Clive. And eleven being from the Blenheim area, one from Taylor, and a hundred and twelve being from right around here, generally in the Venice area. We finalized all the circle sales of the vehicles that we sold recently and received a total amount of five thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which everybody paid and picked up the vehicles now. The administrative finance committee of council, Mayor Christian Barnes-June, the executive director of Tri-County Mental Health, he updated us on the services offered by Tri-County Mental Health. And for those of you who weren't at that meeting, because you're not on that particular committee, there is a brochure or handout that's fun up there. I really, I don't know if you missed this, I did notice, or we did notice, that one of our former employees, Alex Brown, worked in the county for forty-two years, and she decided to retire. And she worked as, she last worked with the clerk of courts office, and was a dedicated employee, did care a lot of votes, dealt with a lot of people in the community. Ms. Bundy will be attending the South Carolina Clerk Council's winter conference on February fourth through the seventh. This looks like, you know, she's convinced me it's a productive meeting, and she learns a lot, I can vouch for that, I'd get a good pin there. The twenty-ninth annual mid-year conference for the South Carolina Association of Counties, Wednesday, February seventeenth, in Columbia. Let Patricia know if you want to go, that's, I think, about a one-day or three-quarters of a day conference that I think has been in the past pretty informative. That's a pretty good group, and of course, it's the South Carolina Association of Counties, and they're beginning to get ready for when the legislature goes into session. Just the first reminder, probably three, four, I'll give you, and you're probably getting them from other areas, is time to file the 2016 Statement of Economic Analysis, the Ethics Report about the loan line. I haven't looked at it yet, I don't know if it's the same class here, but it's not very complicated, something to file, it's just a matter of remembering to sit down and do it. And this is a matter of information, we'll have a performance by Clint Black at the Marlboro Civic Center on February twenty-fifth. And I do understand that all the tickets are sold, which might be able to find one on Black Heart. And I'll ask any questions that you might have.
Any questions? I thought this Monday would be out, up there on the beach, it's twenty degrees. All right, we thank you. We have no citizens to speak, decide on a speech. Yes.
There was a citizen, was it true, to speak? Well, I don't think you can do that, you had to sign in to speak. I even called me on the phone last week and said you wanted to come for counseling, so I told him that he had to leave, and that we may be in and out, am I correct? I don't think you knew that he had to sign his sheet out, I know we don't normally do that, but because I don't think you knew that, then you should have to speak. That's my opinion.
Yeah, we, usually you sign up to speak, you know, we're, we're not with yachters, I mean, Miss Glenn, and I said we're a group to stay up, you know, we need to, we'll come back. I don't want to start a train where everybody starts, but we're calling yachters, I think we started training everybody, let's say.
Yeah, I think, you see, I just didn't want him to think that he was being overlooked, and I figured he didn't know, since you said that he didn't sign in, he didn't know that he had to sign in, and sometimes that happens, so I just wanted to open that up.
Okay, so we'll speak with, with athletes. All right, no, remember that capsule, remember, so Miss Glenn, ready?
Okay, New Year, yes, a lot of things, first, the last year was a good year, that last year was a real good year, they had a lot of good things done, a lot of those programs gone, going in. A program that Dr. Prince has started up with, so, feed the children, that is the ideal program, that's great, you know, that's, Ron Muller, the program, his work in recreation, that he started, that shit, I don't know if that's new. That's real good, and I think we should do that. I'm one of the people that I've always looked at, working real close with the city, and I've been staying with this here for the past eight years in school board. And I would like for this year, this year here, for us to really go back to working, trying to get a better relationship with the city, Minnesota, and our school board. And I, like always, I don't think we can progress without the people that's working together and having all our ministers and everybody working together. So I really like to do that, and I taste doing that. And there's a few other things, homeless, that I think we need to look at, that's, sorry, we got a good unit, but then I notice we have a lot of homeless people that we didn't have before. So we need to look at trying to do something on some sort of shelter or something to deal with the homeless, especially, you know, on that, some of those veterans, that has to really be there. So that's, that's pretty rare for this year to try to work with homeless and build a relationship with the city of Minnesota and our school board. Our legislators, that's, we've never sat down with all four of them and with the committee, or the body, and talked to them, and I think that had hurt us in the past. And that's something I think we really need to look at, is to have a meeting with them, and we can all sit down and work out some of the things that we need to work at in the county. With us not working together is the same thing, we're going nowhere, but not working together.
Yes, I'd like to thank all the county employees for a real productive year we had this year. It seems to be a little trend going on, it's been a long time coming, with our employees, there's something special, and this year, the county took it on after the past year to know a little more of the employees. I think they really appreciate it, and I'd like to say that trend continues, and I hope we all have that, because we did last year. Same thing on the other train, each day might be different, but when you look back at the year, that's a pretty good year, I just can't say enough about them boys, because we've got some, when you hear somebody working in the county for forty-two years, come on, that's too loud. Thank you.
It's lovely, I just want to thank everybody for all, everything they've done over the past year. I know when I first started, we had a lot going on, and we certainly done a lot, and a lot of things done, and have eight-year experience about it, so I just hope that the next year be as good as those again. We got a lot of things done, and, you know, we do work good together, we don't always agree, but sometimes, you know, we get, everybody's idea and even mine change, I said, that's all about like that, or, you know, so I just, you know, we got a good group here, we work good together, it's just good to have that.
Yes, thank you, New Year, good day, a lot of things to be thankful for, as you said. I'll start off with the, our children, their future nonprofit, that the board members and other people suggested, I saw it, it's a worthy cause, we have a house. We had a board meeting earlier, we are running on three schools this month, so the fourth in the world, so we're very thankful. The people in the room, I'm not going to call them by their name, but we thank everybody that contributed, we got as little as seven dollars and fifty cents with the feed job for a week, up to a few thousand dollars from some people. So the back for forth, any and all donations. Mr. Hanes mentioned the report or the meeting with Mr. Young, the executive director from Tri-County, that was a very informative meeting. So if you have time, please take a look at his attachment, he gave an overview of the meeting. I'd like to see the webpage, the county council's webpage updated, I have a look there recently, but a couple of months ago, still has Caesar King's picture on there. Ooh, okay, moving right along, on Monday, the eighteenth, the holiday, Rodney Curtis Kane, Jr., the annual breakfast at the community center on Kane Street will start at eight-thirty with breakfast. Seven dollars for a really nice buffet breakfast that'll carry you through the day. And then the annual evening program this year will be at St. Paul Baptist Church on Kane Street, and I think it starts at six o'clock, I'm not sure. I don't know if they're having a parade this year or not, but the breakfast and the evening program will go on. That's it, thank you.
I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Glenn and Mr. Staley on the virtual council, and wish you all the best of luck with that, nice to see the change. Met the same people for the last five or six years, so that's always good. We, I went, and one of the last things we did as chairman, went to the ribbon cutting for the urgent care center, Scotland Hospital, it was, his bike was there, and his guide, and Mr. Staley. It was really well-tended, it was nice band, nice facility, and Scotland Hospital, you know, in the past year, we lost our hospital to a for-profit company, moved it out, and McCall took over the, the front end, and decided to invest in Chester County. Scotland's the only one that's really stayed here and made more investment, and I think it's important that we stay on top of that and support anything they want to do in the future. One of the most important things we can do, it's out of our control, we can press for, is a change in the law that will allow them to do even more. Right now, the law will not allow them to do a freestanding emergency room type thing because they don't have a license for beds in South Carolina. Last year, that suggestion was made to Representative Henigan, and she wasn't able to push that forward, so I probably, I told her privately and publicly that I think we need to leave there. We wait for others in the state to do it, they're going to be much more likely influenced by hospital lobby and legislature not to push, and this is the way we can do it. And then one other thing, I mentioned Mr. Hanes, is the new traffic circle on 38th has effectively prevented trucks from going from our industrial park to Holly Island. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars invested in that industrial park, which right now is not, you know, hitting all cylinders, but it's there. And I watched, I thought it was kind of small, and I watched the truck go through it, and you have to ride on curbs to get through it, so now trucks have to go to 401 and can't get through it. Now, it's done, but they're talking about doing another one at Oakley Street, and I just want to be sure we don't repeat the same mistake.
I'll carry that to the car.
Yeah.
Can the trucks go down Beauty Spot, take that back road to the industrial park?
They can go down to Beauty Spot, but unless they go back across the lake and all the way up to Landmark Restaurant, they have to go through the circle. You know, I saw Mr. Hanes when I was talking about it, and actually, with somebody, you can't get trucks.
Ten miles an hour, I got to count it, and that's what they have to get to the traffic circle, ten miles an hour, and they're running on both sides of the, of the curb. Yeah, I mean, that's the first time I've ever heard of it, so. You know, during the peak traffic season, you know, people could take all their routes, I mean, that could be a way to take out the, instead of killing people again.
Yeah, it affects all traffic, I guess, is what you made, it's trucks, obviously, but if you were pulling a camber or anything like that, it's going to impact each traffic. And now, with internet works, the Google directions, all they alert you to problems like that, like if you'll notice during the summer, all the traffic will be going down Jennings Street or somewhere, we call it, it's telling that they're right, police are right, speed tickets everywhere, it does feel, you know, if you have those. And I don't know what we can do, now I'm not sure if I can speak up before. And I don't know what we can do, now I'm not sure I can speak over. Just glad it's a truck for me. But it's a man who spent a lot of money and they can't get a truck.
Yeah, that means for me, an ex-truck driver, I mean, I know how important that is. Because I went through that loop there in a car, right? And there's no way you can make that loop without catching the curve. I mean, it's just not going to happen, right? Think of tearing tires up, and tearing roads up, and holding traffic up, and it's going to be accidents. It's going to be major problems here, and it's something, I know that's sort of out of our hands, but we need to do something with that. And I think anything being done like that, I just think the county should be involved in some, something about that, to go to the sign. I have some kind of input and into, you know, this is all about engineers and things that nature should be done.
I'm not being aware of the traffic, though.
Thank you, Ms. Delore.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the employees of the county, the job they've done in the past year. And I want to thank for the thing that they're going to do this year, 29, working with us. It's a new year, and I'm looking forward to bigger and better things this year for the county. And I believe if we work together, keep our heads up, a little water, we can see these things take place. Also, I enjoy working with the county members here at the county council. I enjoy working with every one of you all here, who always have a great time together, working together. This brings us sometime, or we just bring a reward, we keep that, we keep working. And we find we all work together real well, and I know we're going to continue doing it, doing it. I think I'm about to stay up here, I believe.
No, no, that's. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
But I enjoy everything, and I think if we keep working the way we're working and keep our heads up, I think we're going, everything is going to work out really well for Marlboro County. We just have to keep working, working hard until we get to where we want to get. You know, a baby has to crawl before they walk, right? So we've been crawling a long time, and, but I feel like we're going to start walking after a while.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Also, also I'm glad to be a part of the Our Children, Their Future. I am tripping to death about that, because I see so many children that in need here in Marlboro County. And I love some personally, personally myself, that are very happy that we're doing what we're doing. And I'm striving and working hard for that, and I'm really proud of what we're doing and the people that's coming together, helping us and not giving us a second thought about it, and not changing words, but putting out effort to get us where we want to go. And I feel like we're going to climb higher, and I do, and the other thing, I'm not going to mention. I live in church, and I always believed my mom, and that always taught me, if you put Christ first in your life and put it in the God's way, you can go wherever you want to go. The sky's the limit, that even get, face it. You got to put him, you got to put him in the mix, and I mean, you can't, if you don't put him in the mix, you're just going to be lost. You're going to just die, die, because he give you strength to keep on. And I do believe that, and I believe that, that I live here, so, all right? Thank you, everyone.
The, first of all, everybody just said, it'd be basic, that would cover. Ron, the fact for that to use, leadership, your wisdom, your knowledge, you know, I would have to allow you, you're going to swap me right now. Patricia, I have a favor. But, Jason, you go, I said, and the business we're asking you, you know, you got a team behind you. So, maybe you can't, can't win by yourself, you know, we're all here as a team. One thing that I'd like to hop over with is saying, we are representing a town, area. Not only we with the city administrators, the city officials, but area like Pineville and Paulville, these guys need to be included. I would feel that the county cannot grow unless our group is growing. You know, we would bring in, the towns need counting, the county needs state. So with, every, we hopefully make it through it in small steps. The mayor's, then the school board, and then the delegation, how do we go, we direction, go, eventually, everybody will be able to take it. In form of how, how we do it, but we cannot grow as committed as a community until Glenn and Paulie Taylor, or Carl and Wallace, all them pull in and, and talk, you know, a little communication. Until, you know, we wait till we get down to ours, again, you know, we got a lot of lines for somebody, you know, a lot of lines. But, you know, we do that, but we know we need the county to help, and county needs state, and state can't afford it. So, you know, it is a team thing, you know, like, we need to keep on doing this. Basically, with the, with that, like everybody says, you know, we did a great job in 2015, 2016, we promising, continue to work on. And I say, in the community, we need, all the, we might have to lose you, but if we don't do nothing, they're going to talk to us. You know, Carl was on the phone and complaining, giving a pound of fat, you know, you can go for it.
All right. We thank you, everybody, for all that. Now, one thing I have is, you know, with the fire service, the things that the council implemented, you know, as of June, January 1st, everybody in Marlboro County, we had five miles of fire department as a class five, I so rated. I mean, that's a huge task that the council have, fire departments have to do, so it's January 1st, everybody. You know, and there's some other things in place to try to, you know, get everybody, you know, down, safe, and insurance. So I thought it was a big task, fire departments cut it down without council, so the council is, you know, have a vision to move forward. That's what this, everybody's, you know, since I've been on council, we have a vision, everybody gets behind and moving forward, and that's what we're going to continue to do, so. But I think, and I think everybody's going to continue to work this thing, you know, nobody can do it on their own. I mean, you know, everybody up here's got ideas and will move forward. As everybody said, I'm looking for better days for 2016, whatever 2015. If we don't, we're standing still when I'm moving forward. I'm not going to preach like Mr. Bate over there. Nobody has anything else? If you have any questions, I'm here.
So.
All right, moving to the second. All right.